I'm thinking, I'm thinking, because he doesn't have an agenda item on here. Good evening, good evening. Our Planning Commission, the City of Carson Planning Commission. The meeting is now called to order. And we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I will ask Commissioner Johnson if he would lead us in our pledge.
We stand right in front of your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, Madam Secretary, roll call.
Madam Chair Thomas.
Here.
Vice Chair Diaz.
Here.
Commissioner Gara.
Present.
Commissioner Huff.
Present.
Commissioner Infume.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson is not here. Commissioner Monteclato.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda would be oral communications for matters not on the agenda. The public may at this time address the members of the Planning Commission on any matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No action may be taken on non-agendized items except as authorized by law. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to no more than three minutes each speaking once. I have one card for a Mr. John Edmund. How are you this evening? You may begin.
Good, well, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is John Edmund. I'm the owner of Edmund Group and our client is the Orden Company. As part of their portfolio, they own a property at 22309 Main Street. It's been for about 12 years, a vacant gas station at that location. And I'm here tonight to speak briefly about the property. I'll just, as a side note, I remember being here at a council meeting where this commission presented to the council. And as a result of that, I heard it loud and clear. So we're doing before anything else, community outreach. And part of that community outreach is an invitation, if I may approach the clerk to provide for you. This is going in homes to members of the community within 1,500 square feet from that site. We've reached out to the high school and the property owners adjacent. There's a, there's a couple of apartment buildings and and currently my colleague, who is the principal manager of the Orden Company is at Jim Dear's Community Town Hall tonight because it's in his district. And so just to give you a quick overview and background of projects, lots of information contained in this mailer that's going out. It was a gas station since 1968 to 2012 and was closed. All the soil was remediated and it's been heavily marketed for the past 12 years. And some of the interests from business community has been widely marketed. And the interest is like a convenience store, a car wash, EV charging station. The property is too small for most retail uses. And so we have good news or what we think will be good news. And we want to engage with the community to support a new plan proposing a family casual dining restaurant. And we are starting with phone calls. They've already gone out last week, live, that's live phone calls. The mailer, we're knocking on doors and we'll also do some other communication as well as the website. That's up and active right now. You can sign up to be emailed information as we go through this process. This is the first step in many steps as well as gather support or gather concerns. And we want to be able to be transparent and open and communicate with folks about what we hope to do as we move through the process. So we're starting with the community first. And you as leaders of the community, we're humbly inviting you to attend the meeting if you'd like. Certainly we'll do a readout from that meeting. And that's all I wanted to do is just come and invite your, the commission and Madam Chair. And we really appreciate your service and dedication to the community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you very much. Have a good day, guys.
Thank you. Can't take any action on it, but thank you for your presentation. Appreciate that. Okay. Next, oral communications for non-public hearing items listed on the agenda. Members of the public, the public may at this time address the members of the Planning Commission on any matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No action may be taken on non-agendized items except as authorized by law. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to no more than three minutes each speaking once. Do we have any cards for non-public hearing items?
There are none, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next item that we have on the agenda will be for the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion approval for the minutes.
Second.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Huff and second by Commissioner Infume. When do a roll call or just?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item we have on the agenda will be for public hearing. Excuse me, in the public hearing. I have Max Castillo, Associate Planner, but are you going to be presenting that? Okay, Senior Planner Alexandra, you have the floor.
Good evening, Madam Chair Thomas and the Commission. Good to see you this evening. McKenna Alexandria, Senior Planner. I'm here on behalf of Associate Planner Max Castillo. And I'm also here in place of our illustrious planning manager, Christopher Palmer. So regarding this project, as you mentioned, it is, we're requesting it to be continued so that the applicant and the planner has the opportunity to refine some matters. And we're asking the project to be continued to the next meeting in the presentation.
Okay. Now, it was requested that we do at least open the public hearing for anyone who might be present to speak regarding the public hearing. But we will, we will be continuing this item to our next meeting, which is May 13th. Do we have any speakers regarding this public hearing item? Madam Secretary.
There are none, Madam Chair.
Hearing none, then we will continue, we will continue this item. I keep seeing this without, without, so I need a, I need someone to.
Motion, please.
A motion, yes, please.
Madam Chair, I move that we continue this item until May the 13th at our next regularly scheduled commission meeting.
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Huff, second by Commissioner Infume. Roll call, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can we have it verbalized, the identification of the matter we're continuing, please? Is that possible?
Okay, we can. The tentative track map that the applicant is Douglas Maupin, Maupin Development. Property owner, Harbor Federal Credit Union. Request to construct a 51-unit multifamily condominium development on a 1.2 acre site located at 438 West Carson Street. And this item, which is identified as APN 7343-019-092, will be continued, once we have our vote, to the next meeting, which is May 13th, 2025. You good?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Secretary.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And that's, that's the only item that we have on the agenda for tonight. And now we will get into, do we have any further comments on the manager's report?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners' oral communications will start at my left with.
Madam.
Oh. Huh?
Madam Chair, there were two small mistakes on our minutes. I'm very sorry. I, and it went through on consent.
Yeah, it did. Is it a game changer?
No.
Okay.
No, I'll give it to the attention of Secretary.
There you go. Okay. So Commissioners, Communications, Commissioner Monteclero.
Yeah, I just want to express sympathy and condolences to the passing of the Pope, Pope Francis. And also for three tragic, for a tragic multi collision, vehicle collision by, at the intersection of Figueroa and Sepulveda that happened last week. And I live a stone away from that location. So I'm complete.
Thank you, our hearts do go out. And thank you for mentioning the Pope and the passing of the Pope. And then for those who were involved in the, were their fatalities in the accident.
Three.
Three fatalities, okay.
Including a pet, a dog, in Indy, yeah, in one of the vehicles.
So our thoughts and prayers go out to the family as well. Thank you so much. Commissioner Huff.
Good afternoon to everybody. I would like to join my commissioner. As far as the Pope, I thought it was quite, how can I say, quite an honor for his service that he continued to serve all the way up to the end, knowing that he had been advised not to go out to be among the people or to make that final speech or run. He decided to do it anyway. And I just want to say that's, takes a lot of courage there. And I'm glad to see maybe not exactly that same courage, but our desire is the same on this commission, I think, to serve to the end and to do our utmost.
But if I get sick, I'm not coming.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. I just thought I'd add a little levity to that. Yes, Commissioner Gara.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a brief question. I would like an update by, by planning staff of the facade upgrades that were supposedly being done. If we can get some specificity as it relates to what has been done, what has been accomplished within the next couple of meetings, I would certainly appreciate that. And I am complete, Madam Chair.
Okay, so you have any particular facades in mind or?
As I understand it, when we approve projects, they offer to make improvements. And so we should already have specifics as it relates to what facade improvements have been promised. And so I, I don't recall everything, we've been here.
So are you, I want to be clear so that you will know what you're looking for. Did you want her to go back to past projects to give you a report on those projects?
Yes, with specificity as it relates to the facade improvements. I was told by the director that it's a complicated issue. But hopefully, you know, we have some accountability of what's actually being done. So that's my thing.
Yeah, go ahead and respond to that, please.
Are you referring to the facade improvement program? Or projects and/or projects that were presented before the body?
Both. I would like to know what's actually being improved.
Okay.
Get in your car and drive around to it. No, let me stop.
No, I.
No, 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 I hear you because I will say this. I will say this, I must say this. I get in my car and I drive around. When we approve projects, it's not the end of it for me. Because we live here. So I drive around and I see what's been done. And before I get into that, because I got a response on something that I brought up, but I think you bring up a good thing. Let me, let me finish and then I'll, let me go to the others and then we'll come back. If that's okay, we'll put a pin in there just for a minute. And I'll share something with you. Mr. Johnson, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy to be here, happy to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Infume.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Doesn't have anything to report, but I do echo the sentiments of the passing of a Pope. It is, he's a great man, great, great man, and it's sad.
Yeah.
So that ends Infume.
Okay. Vice Chair Diaz.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to announce that I'll be hosting a health fair on Saturday, May 10th, from noon to 3:00. I left the flyers at home that I was going to bring for, for my colleagues and staff. But it'll be at the Dominguez Lincoln Village Community Center at 21156 South Santa Fe Avenue in Carson. Again, from noon to 3:00, everyone is welcome. It's a health fair. Thank you, I'm complete.
Awesome. Let me just say, I want to say this, as I look at what was presented to us tonight. And I had to look at the backside because in my head, I was thinking about this service station, which is, if I'm not mistaken, is that Main and 223rd or somewhere in there? Yeah, and this was something that was very much on the mind of, at the time, Richard Hernandez, who was a commissioner at the time. And he would always ask what's happening with this service station. So now we see that a proposal, there is a proposal that will be forthcoming. And I, I think that's just a good thing. I hope he is watching tonight or able to attend any meetings that will give him some sort of information on that. At our last meeting, I asked, and probably two meetings before that, my concern was In-N-Out Burger on Avalon. And I asked about that double turning lane that would take them, if you're southbound on Avalon and you're going to make that turn into In-N-Out. The turning lane was supposed to be a double turning lane so that they would have enough space for staging and not block the rest of Avalon as traffic that would be going through. So I did learn today that they are aware that they do need a second turning lane. Okay? And with that second turning lane, there, there will need to be an arm of the traffic signal there that is a turn signal. So right now, the signal is just a go, you know how it works. There, the arm is on back order at this, at this time and should be received sometime in the month of September. So they're not ignoring the fact that they promised that they would do that. And that was part of the acceptance of the project. But they just need to get that part of the traffic signal received and then they will be completing that. So that may be very happy to hear that. But then going to Commissioner Gara. When, when we have these projects, and I'm not suggesting, and this is just what I do. I like to drive around periodically. Because these projects, when we approve them, sometimes it's a year later and in some cases, a year and a half later that they start actually doing the construction, once they complete all of the permits that they have to go through and all of the other things. The approval, this is, they do a number of things prior to coming to us. And then we give the approval and then there are other things that they still have to do before the actual construction begins. And so there's a project on Figueroa that would be, let's see, it's actually on Figueroa. So it's on the south side of Figueroa and Carson. And we approved a development for some apartment townhomes there. And I'm now seeing construction there. I've been following up on that for a minute. When are they going to start? I don't know if you remember those things. There's some other, other projects. So you know, when you find yourself just driving around Carson, you know, you remember what you approved and just kind of take a good look. But what I'm thinking about is, as you requesting, when we do the end of year report, they do come back to us and say, this is the project that we approved here is where it is. And now the mayor is requesting that as well because when she does her state of the city, then all of that is included in the state of the city. So I am with you. We do want to know. And I think we do get that information at the end of the year or when you do the review, and you can chime in if you like. I don't want to put any extra on the staff. I want to say this right. I don't want to put any extra on the staff when they're already. They have plans to do that. You follow me? Are we okay with that?
Again, I'll reiterate the fact that with specificity in mind, we should do it in a public forum like we're doing here. People do watch. I get people calling me all the time, walking up to me all the time and asking. So if we actually make it public from our staff, and the bottom line is, hopefully they're following up on what was promised and what's supposed to be happening.
Well, they are because they have to make sure the projects meet all of the, you talk about specificity. We have, they have to make sure that all of the things that are listed in that contract with the city, that those, those conditions are met. We have the conditions that we have with every project that comes through. So they do have to follow that.
And, and I respect that we have an amazing staff. However, we should make it public.
And whenever you do that summation, that summary, did we not make it public here? Yeah. Did I miss something?
Yes, it was in a public hearing and it was a video sharing of your year's view of all the projects. And to our Madam Chair's point, it provides the opportunity for those projects that may be, for instance, first year that we started doing this, it may have been a project that was approved. And then last year, you saw that project under construction. And the next year, you know, could be that that same project is now built. So it gives you the opportunity to see it go through that process when we do our year-end review, which is, we, we ideally would like to do that every October because it also coincides with Planning Community Month. So we try and keep it all kind of in-house of October. But of course, it is, can be flexible as a direction from our mayor and council if they want us to come sooner. Ideally, we would like to try and keep it in every October, though.
And that's what they have been doing.
I concur with that, but what I'm saying is, if it's done here during our public hearing, the public would be better informed.
It is done here.
Yeah, but how often?
Every October.
Yeah, and to me, it should be done upon completion, maybe each meeting or every other meeting.
No. I'm sorry.
I want to hear it.
And I agree too, but she, as she explained, every month, it, when you see it, if you see it in October, there's nothing constructed yet. We may have approved it last year.
No, I understand.
So she says, as it moves through the phases, then that's what they're looking to present. I, that's something, let me just say, why don't you take that up with Chris Palmer?
Okay, I will, thank you.
Yeah, we'll.
I'm complete.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I think they do an excellent job of making sure it is publicized. They present it in our meetings here, which the public gets to see. And then it goes to the city council and this is presented to the city council. And then it's also showing up in the state of the city. I don't know how many more times, but I'll let you handle that. How about that?
So we agree to disagree as it relates to how many times.
Absolutely, we do.
And I'm fine with that. Like I said, our staff does an excellent job. But I just believe a better informed community is a happy community. And I'm complete, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay.
Oh.
Yes.
I have a question concerning the In-N-Out Burger.
Yes.
And we're supposed to have a double lane there?
Yes.
Okay, so they are also going to put in that double lane?
Yeah, so right now it's a single lane.
Right.
They will put that double lane in, that second lane in, and there is space for it when they get the arm for the turn signal that's at that intersection.
Can, is that going to be done without a disruption again to the traffic flow? I mean, putting in that second lane?
There is going to be some disruption because you got to put in a lane, but the space is there to do that.
I understand.
Yeah, and right now, when you go through there, okay, the, the, the lane that goes south on Avalon like this.
Right.
And then you go into the turn and you stage. Well, you have cars, so many cars staging to make that left turn.
Right.
To go to In-N-Out.
No.
Until those cars come out in here, in the main lane that's going south. And so once they get in there, then that means every other car is lining up behind them.
Yeah.
And so no one can go at that point until the light turns green. And then finally it starts to, and then, so you have that backup that's happening at the corner of Del Amo and Avalon. And that's where the bottleneck is coming. So we need a turn signal. And so when that turn signal changes first, then that moves that traffic along. But even before the turn signal changes, if you've got two lanes where they can queue up, then you've got cars that can still go in and go in and leave these cars that want to go through to the south. You don't have that backup to Del Amo and Avalon. That, that's where the bottleneck is coming.
Okay.
And so then we have some other things that are going to be happening on the opposite side of the street.
I know.
Yeah. So with that happening, you know, we just need to, we're going to have traffic.
Of course.
And our people are like, oh, we're getting so much stuff. We have so much traffic. Well, that's the growth of the city. And so what we need to do is, every time we do projects that are in those areas and in any area, we must be mindful. and in any area, we must be mindful of the traffic to mitigate as much of it as possible as we're approving those projects that are going to be going in there. So that, that's the idea. So they are waiting for that to happen. As we see more projects go in, I think we need to be mindful of the.
We're growing.
Exactly, which is a good thing.
Which is a good thing.
Any final comments? Because I'm done.
I just have a question. What's happening across the street?
I knew that was coming.
Sorry.
Fast food.
Oh, really?
Huh? What did you say?
Oh, I just said fast.
No, no, things change. That's why I don't want to say anything. I'll tell you offline. But things change, just like that.
Yep.
You hear something yesterday, and by today, it has changed.
I certainly hope.
So no, that's not what's happening.
I hope so. Afterwards, then, that made me happy.
Can I bang the gavel? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.